I call this meeting to order.
Mayor Walker.
Present.
Vice Mayor McGill.
Here.
Counselor Hill.
Here.
Counselor Payne.
Here.
Counselor Snook.
Here.
All right, thank you, Ms. Thomas. Thank you all for joining us today. We have a major announcement. We have selected and we're appointing a city manager, Mr. Chip Boils. You'll have an opportunity to hear a brief statement from each counselor and Mr. Boils. And at the end of that, we will take questions from the press. We also are aware that the public would have had a lot of questions about this process, why it was handled in this manner, and what a future process will look like. And we are hoping to be able to answer some of those questions at the next council meeting. So make sure that you have that information in the near future. And so I'm going to open it up to my colleagues to make their statements.
I think Counselor Payne has a joint statement from the council.
Sure, yeah, I'll just read a joint statement on behalf of the entire Charlottesville City Council. Over the past week, City Council has held several closed sessions to discuss the state of the organization. We know that this has caused much speculation as to the reasons for these meetings and what is to come from them. Today, we are announcing that Mr. John Blair will be leaving the city of Charlottesville effective March 5th, 2021, having accepted a position as city attorney in the city of Stanton. Blair's final day as acting city manager will be February 12th, 2021. Mr. Blair has served the city faithfully and diligently, and we offer nothing but our sincerest thanks for his service in these challenging times for our city. We wish him the best in his career. With this, we would like to announce that Mr. Chip Boils has agreed to join the organization as city manager. After carefully balancing the needs of the city at this current time, we are offering Mr. Boils the city manager position with the goal of stabilizing the organization and rebuilding the leadership team within City Hall. Mr. Boils, age 58, has served as assistant city manager and city manager in the cities of Taney Town, Maryland, Hardyville, South Carolina, and Clemson, South Carolina. Prior to most recently serving seven years as the executive director of the Thomas Jefferson Planning District Commission here in Charlottesville, Mr. Boils was the urban development director in the mayor's office of the city parish of Baton Rouge, Louisiana. Mr. Boils comes with council's full support in taking all necessary actions to stabilize the organization and create the quality local government our community deserves. Once the organization is stabilized, council anticipates launching a full public search process for hiring a city manager, likely sometime in 2022. Over the past several months, city government has experienced significant turnover, uncertainty, and instability. This has occurred at a time when our community is facing historic challenges created by a global pandemic, economic instability, and the need to address longstanding inequities within our community. City Council must directly confront the causes of the instability within city government. We did not end up in this situation overnight. We will not get out of it overnight. The central task facing City Council over the next year is to work with the city manager's office to rebuild stability and assemble a leadership team that applies professional, stable governance to the many issues facing our community. That is the foundation of serving our community and implementing sound public policy, and that foundation is cracked. Today is only the beginning of this work. Over the coming months, council must take additional actions to change the dynamics within City Hall and create an environment of mission-driven teamwork, collaboration, and trust. Council must acknowledge its central role in creating the instability within City Hall. We will need to establish and adhere to clear procedures, expectations, and norms that govern how council conducts business among itself, runs meetings, communicates with the city manager's office and city staff, and prioritizes public policy. City government is filled with dedicated public servants who work daily to serve our community. It is City Council's responsibility to show leadership and make the changes necessary to create an environment where city staff are empowered to lead the organization and execute council's policy priorities. Our community needs leadership, and council must rise to the occasion. We would like to express our deep gratitude to all those who have stepped forward to offer their support, experience, and knowledge to our city during this moment of crisis. It highlights our greatest asset, our city's dedicated staff, public servants, and community members. It will require our collective wisdom and efforts to support our local government in the task of creating the just, resilient, and equitable community we can and will be.
Thank you, Counselor Payne. I fully support the statement from Counselor Payne, has shared on behalf of council, and remain committed to doing my part to help stabilize the organization, working collaboratively with my colleagues, staff, and the staff under the leadership of Mr. Boils. Mr. Blair's departure is a great loss for the organization and the community that we serve. It would be, I would be remiss of me not to acknowledge the sacrifices that he and his family have made for this organization during his tenure, and most notably in his times acting city manager. John, while I certainly wish you well in your endeavors, I will miss you greatly, and the void you will leave is irreplaceable. Congratulations, Stanton. You are getting one of our best. Mr. Boils' coming on board is a great gain for the organization and the community we collectively serve. I want to thank him and his family for believing in us to make their own sacrifices as he joins in our quest to stabilize the organization, so we may best serve the needs of all of our citizens. Chip, I've appreciated your partnership in our regional capacities, and I'm looking forward to being one of your many partners in the city in the year ahead. Thank you, TJ PDC, for supporting us and getting one of your best. These are challenging times in our city and in our nation. It is time that we look forward, and it's going to take all of us coming together with open minds and mutual respect to pave a path that is just, equitable, resilient, and sustainable. Thank you and welcome, Chip.
Mayor Walker, are we ready to take questions, or are we going to continue to hear from council?
Counselor, is it your intention to make statements?
I just want to say to welcome Chip. Mr. Boils, I look forward to working with you. I know you have council's 100% support behind you. We recognize we are in a very troubling environment, and we are all behind working with you to strengthen our city in in many ways. Do you also want to say that we acknowledge the loss of Mr. Blair to our city team? And his time working with us has continued to help get us through to where we are now, and we truly, truly appreciate his time, his family's time, and effort into this. And I look forward to the future that we are going to build with Mr. Boils, and I have faith that this is a wonderful chance for our city.
I would just like to echo, first of all, the praise for and thanks for John Blair and his contributions to the city. You know, when we asked him in September after Dr. Richardson announced his departure from the city, we asked him to step into this role. It was it was a true gift to the city that he agreed to do that. He is not by training a city manager, he is by training a city attorney. And he was willing to step out of his comfort zone at a time when we needed someone with his steadying presence able to provide that service to us. It was a taxing gift to us. It was something that he spent, I'm sure, a lot more time over the last few months than he thought he was bargaining for. But it's just been a great gift to us, and we really do appreciate it. The second thing that I wanted to note is that it was important to me as we tried to move forward that we, in fact, move forward, that we not wallow in or be submerged by the past, and that we look forward to new leadership, to new experience that Chip brings to us that can be of great assistance to us. And I've said before that in many ways, the events of August 2017 are like a bell that keeps ringing. It hasn't stopped ringing in Charlottesville, and what we've seen nationally just reinforces that. For a number of reasons, it has been apparent that we needed to, the only way to move forward was to move forward. And so Chip represents that moving forward, and I'm very grateful, Chip, that you have agreed to do that. I'll also say that I was explaining to my wife, subject to the pillow privilege, as we sometimes refer to it, what was going on, and I said, "One of the best things about Chip is that he's got a very ready smile." And we will, that smile may be tested in the days and months and years to come, but we will rely on it and enjoy it and hope that we don't knock it off your face too often. Thank you.
Mr. Counselor Payne, are you going to make any additional comment?
I don't have any additional comments beyond just echoing the sincere thanks for Mr. Blair's service to the city. It's been a joy to work with him, not just professionally, but personally as well. And I know he will be an enormous asset for the city of Stanton, and I know all of us, you know, can't thank him enough for his service to the city.
And thank you, and Mr. Boils, before you make any statements that you would like to make. Again, I know that this was a challenging process over the past, you know, few days, weeks, contemplating whether this is something that you would want to do at this time in your life, and I appreciate the, you know, the opportunity, as Counselor Snook said, to be able to maybe hopefully truly move forward and and start stabilizing, balancing the organization, but also acknowledge the reason why we're doing that. We need a stable organization so that we can meet the needs of our, you know, citizens. And as we keep bringing up, and Charlottesville has been brought up a lot since the terrorist attacks in DC, I think we don't even really understand how we will never be able to shift from that until we actually put some things in place and heal from what many of us knew long before 2017. And as you contemplated leaving a role that you were having a lot of success in and a lot of positive experiences in, as someone who actively watches council meetings and keeps up with the news, knowing that this was not going to be a walk in the park stepping into it, I really appreciate your willingness to do that. And with that, any thing that you would like to share at this time? And again, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all of City Council. Yes, I'm very appreciative that you and the City Council are entrusting me with this important responsibility and the importance of it at this particular time, when leadership and solidarity is so needed in Charlottesville, but as Councilmember Hill stated, across our entire nation. I look forward to working with all of the city staff. I especially look forward to working with all of the Charlottesville community. It's very, very important for me. I'm a people person, and that's where I look to spend a lot of time. I know that there are a number of citizens that were looking for a different direction from, as a city manager, but I'm trusting the City Council and your commitment to the city to lead all of Charlottesville to a much brighter future. I hope that over time, I will build the support of all of the community for all of us to work together to a more unified community in Charlottesville. I also really want to say a thank you to my Board of Commissioners at the Thomas Jefferson Planning District. They have been very supportive in this and really see the importance of partnership with the city of Charlottesville as one of our major members, and look forward to that relationship, excuse me, that relationship that will continue between the PDC and the city. Again, Mayor, Council, and all of the people of Charlottesville, thank you.
Mr. Rice will take questions from the press now.
Thank you, Mayor Walker. I would like to now invite our credentialed media to ask questions by clicking the raise hand icon. When I call on you and activate your mic, you can ask your first question and a follow-up question. We will give each media outlet two opportunities to ask questions, so please raise your hand again if needed. Our first question is coming from Riley Wyatt with NBC 29. Riley, you're on with council.
Hello, can you hear me okay? All righty, so this step of getting, you know, Chip in here as city manager is obviously a big one to rebuilding, but what else is top of mind for you guys? I know that there's a couple other staffing issues. What needs to be done moving forward?
Be happy to answer, and others obviously feel free to answer as well. I mean, I think it's really going to require working directly with the city manager's office in order to build a leadership team, fill those vacancies and fill them to create a mission-driven team that, as Mayor Walker said, is focused on bringing stability, but bringing stability with a goal in mind, in that goal of executing the policy priorities that we ran on and care about for the community. Likewise, I think, you know, council is going to need to, you know, work with the city manager's office to, you know, create processes to have clear communication among ourselves, develop a strategic plan, more clearly communicate our policy priorities with the city manager's office and city staff, and, you know, have those procedures and collaborative work really guide the process of filling vacancies and bringing stability.
Riley, do you have a follow-up question?
Um, yes, I also just wanted to ask, you know, I've had the pleasure of knowing Chip on a a little bit of a basis, but I wanted to know kind of what drew you to elect Chip as city manager?
Sorry, are we going to go? I'll defer to the mayor.
Well, I'll start. The two capacities that I have been able to witness how Chip operates has been with the PDC. When I stepped in, when former Counselor Signer couldn't, you know, had family constraints during that late evening meeting time, and then with the RTP. And my thoughts here was just that we had once someone who was neutral. Chip has been in the community for a number of years, but he hasn't been in the organization. And it will provide us an opportunity to just look at any issues, any that were brought up through a neutral lens, and I thought that that was very important. But in witnessing him in those two, within those two capacities, I was able to see someone who was an excellent communicator and who was very thorough in the information that the board members would receive from them. And I'm hoping that those skills, along with being able to bring, you know, just a new and fresh perspective to the organization, will allow us to heal and actually be able to get some of the work that we have all promised to do done.
And I just wanted to add that I was impressed, first of all, that he would bring, does bring to the position prior experience as a city manager. I think that that is important for all of us, that he understands the role and that he helps us understand the role that we have in the city manager form of government. Number two, that I've seen him be a consensus builder. And number three, that although he has not been employed by the city of Charlottesville, he knows the city of Charlottesville. He's lived here for seven years. He's had a chance to observe our government in action. He has, he knows exactly what he's getting into, let me put it that way. All of those are important characteristics.
Okay, our next question comes from Nolan Stout with the Daily Progress. Nolan, you're on with council. You have one question and a follow-up.
Hi, can you hear me? So Chip, my first question would be, you've worked the last seven years in regional capacity, how are you going to change to this? Instead of looking regionally, because the city really needs to focus internally, how are you going to change your mission with that?
Sure, well, prior to my seven years here, it's been predominantly at local government levels. You know, most recently, as was stated, in the city of Baton Rouge, which is quite a bit larger, but and with a number of its own challenges and that we had to focus with. And I was also there during a transition period for their council, which is actually a mayor and 12 council members. The focus is just to think back and to work back to my experience as a city manager, now looking at the city government. But I don't want to lose focus either on the regional importance, because as Charlottesville goes, so goes our region as well. So it will not be a complete change, but just a more of a difference in a way to focus towards the city of Charlottesville, but keeping the region in mind as well.
And then my second question was more for council was, you know, how difficult was going through these work, these closed sessions and the process to get to this decision?
Go ahead.
I was going to say, I wouldn't characterize them as difficult, I would characterize them as thorough. We have been working to evaluate the needs of the city and the need and bringing forward the best match for the city at this time. And we wanted to make sure we spent time in evaluating and doing the most thorough job we could. And I feel that we've done that, and we've come out with a good result that I'm, I think we are all very happy with and truly believe that this is a good way forward for our city in our future.
You know, I'd echo that, and it's obviously an extremely difficult and challenging time for the city and the community, not just with, you know, leadership changes in the city, but the global pandemic and the unrest nationally, the economic instability. And so, you know, it's obviously a very challenging time for the City Hall, the Charlottesville community, and our nation. And, you know, that's certainly reflected in our conversations, but I think one of the things, you know, we were able to focus on is honestly acknowledging the challenges and what needs to change and how much work there is ahead of us, but also looking at those as opportunities and thinking about what are the opportunities for our city as we rebuild, to really build, you know, a strong team that's mission-driven and is able to just have a vision for what our city can be. And I think, you know, that's one of the bright spots of the conversations, I think for sure, is along with all the challenges, which are very real, come enormous opportunities. And I think we all feel confident that going forward, that we're going to be able to take take a hold of those opportunities and really get to a better place as a city and get to a place where we're better able to take action on policies to take care and support our community.
Okay, our next question comes from Sean Tubbs. Sean, you are on with council. You have one question and a follow-up.
Thank you so much. Yes, so one of the issues that, that obviously you're coming from the Planning District Commission, we're in the, we've been in the middle of a comprehensive plan and all of rewrite for many years now. Do you think that your strength or that, how will you be in that conversation, also given the fact that you still need a Neighborhood Development Services Director? Yeah, I'll just leave it there.
Well, I'll start with saying that I trust the staff at the NDS. They've gotten us to this point with the comprehensive plan. I do believe, coming in from the PDC, I fully understand the importance of not just the comp plan, but the timeliness of the comp plan. And so I do believe I will put a little bit more priority in not just that planning effort, but a number of the other planning efforts around affordable housing and others, knowing again, you know, how important that is. And then, of course, weighing it with all the many other challenges and the opportunities that we have, but we'll stay focused on things that are near and dear like planning.
And then a follow-up, just for clarification. So is this a position that's, is this an interim city? Is this an interim position, or are you, are you the permanent one? You did say that there'd be a job search, but in the meantime, what should we be using as a job title?
I will turn over to the mayor for that.
Yeah, Counselor Hill, you were answering that.
Yeah, at this time, you know, council, as reflected in the announcement, that Mr. Boils will be our city manager, and that's what he should be referred to as, and we are certainly empowering him with all of the duties of a city manager.
Okay, our next, oh, sorry.
Yeah, just acknowledge that this isn't a process that any of us would have preferred. We would, we, I enjoy the open, the panel discussions, hearing feedback from citizens once they are introduced to the finalists and being able to weigh in. And it's important for us to understand that the culture that has been created by some of us internally, publicly, had us in a closed session attempting to make this decision the best we knew how. And so over the coming months, years, you know, just as we reflect on how to make sure that we don't end up in a position like this again, we'll all have to, you know, kind of look internally to see how we move forward together together differently. I know we're going to get this question a lot, which is why I paused, you know, to comment, because no one is going to be happy with the fact that five elected officials made a decision that's usually a very robust and thorough process by themselves. And so we acknowledge that, we understand that those questions, you know, are going to come and that we're going to have to have a lot of conversations because of the way that this, you know, decision was made. And I look forward to having those conversations and figuring out how to make sure that we always have, you know, a very open and fluid democracy in Charlottesville.
Thank you, Mayor. Next question is from Charlotte Woods with Charlottesville tomorrow. Charlotte, you are on with council. You have one question and a follow-up.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My first question is for Chip. What are your priorities when taking on this new position? How can you help bring stabilization to Charlottesville?
I believe the very first priorities which the council have already stated and laid out is filling the positions that we need and the leadership capacity. There are quite a number of those. I am a very big Jim Collins fan with good to great, and, you know, we've got a very big bus here. We've got to get the right people on the bus and then the right people in the right seats. It's crucial that we do that. That will then set the stage for how we're able to move the rest of the city forward. So that would be my first priority, working with council. So that would be my my first priority of working with council.
Second, go ahead. The second question?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Chip. And then I know that you spoke about relaunching a search in sometime in 2022. Will you be using the same consulting firm? This is for city council, or will you be selecting a different one?
It's time we've concluded our our work with with that consulting firm. So another RFP would be required, and that will be done by the future council, I would anticipate.
Okay, our next question comes from Carly Haynes with CBS 19. Carly, you are on with council. You have one question and a follow up.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much. So first question was, are there any next steps of this process? Is there a training timeline that we should be aware of?
I would just say, one of the reasons we wanted to hire Chip was that he wouldn't need a training timeline. He's he's well acquainted with the job description of a city manager. He knows the city. And I think we're all looking forward to to having him jump right in and start going.
Thank you. And then.
Sorry to cut you off, Carly. That was your follow up, but you will have another chance to ask a question and a follow up after we hear from Joe Thomas and Brielle. And Joe, you are next and you are on with council. Joe, you would have to unmute you. I have enabled your audio.
There I am. You hear me now?
I can.
Okay. A chip, a question for you. As somebody working as a stakeholder from the outside, does that give you a unique view of some of the things that have to be addressed first as city manager to stabilize, as the council has said, the organization and get moving forward again?
I certainly, thanks, Joe. I certainly believe that it does give me a unique perspective. Having worked at arms length with both the city council and the staff at the city and give me a chance to to have my own opinions and ideas of what does need to be worked on first. But I also think it's very, very crucial to know that my ideas will be shared with the council and we'll we'll come to these solutions together.
And the follow up question is the filling the empty positions a priority or is a priority the very public finalist role that Police Chief Brackney had in Dallas and stabilizing what may be a police chief that is sending resumes out? Chip?
For me, it's it's all of the key leadership positions. They're they're all have their own integral part to fulfilling all of the city's missions. And I believe we have to work on all of those together and equally. Certainly, having a sitting department head, they are, it will allow the opportunity to have direct conversations for what's good and what's bad that may be generating interest in leaving. You know, certainly that'll be the easier conversations to have than to try to figure out why a seat is empty when there's nobody there to talk to.
Okay, our next question comes from Brielle Entziger from Charlottesville tomorrow. And I'm sorry, Brielle, from Seville Weekly. You are all with council.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Can you hear me? Awesome. Thank you. Oh, hi, everyone. I just had a few questions. So first one, so obviously, it seems like Chip was kind of handpicked by you guys. So I was wondering, when you were looking for, like in your closed meetings, when you're looking for someone for a city manager, were you looking at people already in Charlottesville, like Chip was, like in Charlottesville organizations? Yeah.
I think we were really just looking, like we've, we said it again and again, what is, what types of candidates will help bring stabilization to the organization swiftly? Obviously, with a lot of transitions taking place. And it certainly, this is the benefit of people who are familiar with the community and who have, you know, worked in the community and and Chip's key live in the community and certainly care about this community and want to see that stabilization themselves. And so I think that's certainly what drove some of our considerations as we as we discuss this in closed sessions.
And I would add, I think, having we confront, you know, the situation that the city is in, you know, is a leadership crisis. It's not a, it's not a normal time. And, you know, unfortunately, you know, it you know, it puts us in a position where confronting that leadership crisis and bringing stability and bring the right person in is is vital. But, you know, it's it's it was certainly, it's not a normal time for the cities. So it's not, you know, a normal process in terms of, you know, what has happened in previous city manager searches. And the goal was really finding the right person who can, again, confront head on the leadership crisis and bring stability and ensure that the organization gets to a good place. So we can start to build a strong team and start to really take action on the policies we care about. So I think that that really motivated it. And I think, you know, given the the unique situation and the reality of the leadership crisis, I think, you know, we're very fortunate that Mr. Boils is willing to step up and serve the community. And I think we have the right person for this very unique, challenging situation.
And one point that I just want to make absolutely clear is I don't want anybody to think that we just settled when we picked Chip, that we very quickly recognized that his unique capabilities, we were really, we're really blessed that he was here, that we didn't have to go through an extensive search to come up with somebody who was very well qualified for the position. Folks may not know this, but he was actually involved in the city manager selection process back 10 years or so ago when Maurice Jones was hired. He's been known to Charlottesville and has known Charlottesville for a long time. He has been respected in Charlottesville for a long time. This was, this was a, we were just, I say, we were very fortunate that he was here, that he was amenable, and we're delighted that he will be our leader going forward.
And I think it's also important to just, and you know, I'm, you know, I'll keep saying the same thing just to make sure people get it. But we're not trying to set a precedent here with how council makes decisions. We understand that we were not elected to make decisions behind closed doors. And so we want you all to just fully understand that. But at the same time, we took all the information that we had. And this is, this is where where we ended up having to make this decision and in the hopes that it would come, you know, come together and that we wouldn't be void of leadership at the top level of our administration, because we knew that the last person left in it was also leaving too. And so I just want, I'm just going to keep saying that. I've been saying it for, you know, for the past two weeks, almost every conversation that I've I've had. And just again, we understand the importance of making these decisions with you, because we're only here because of you all. And so we fully understand that.
Great. And then my second question was, is there a specific reason why you all are anticipating possibly starting a new city manager search in 2022? Is that your certain reason behind that timeline?
That is just to make sure, as the mayor has stated, that we do honor this, the process correctly. We also know that at this time, we don't feel that we cannot have another interim manager. We need, we have too many vacancies. We need to empower someone to be a true city manager. We are incredibly lucky that Mr. Boils is here. And he is also, when we do a more formalized search, will be welcome to apply for that if he so chooses. And we are, I mean, I am looking forward to him doing such a great job, as he said at one point to me, that we will be choosing him for a longer haul. But it's really important that we do honor the whole search process in the future. But right now, we also have to empower someone to truly make the changes that are necessary, the hiring processes that are necessary to stabilize this government. And then that's impossible to do when you're in interim.
And I would definitely echo that and say, I think, you know, the reason for it is because, you know, we have to confront the uniqueness of the situation and the severity of the crisis and the urgent need to bring stability to the organization and move in a better direction, while also acknowledging that, you know, we have to confront the reality and uniqueness of that situation. But we absolutely have to ensure that, you know, it's at some point, you know, there's a full public process. And as Mayor Walker said, you know, we want to be very clear that we're not and we do not want to set a precedent of, you know, making decisions in this way. It's just the reality of confronting the the crisis that we're in. And as Vice Mayor McGill said, you know, Mr. Boils, if he so chooses, is absolutely able to to be a part of that process. But we want to ensure that the precedent is that there's always a full public process while also, again, just grappling with the reality of the situation that we find ourselves in.
And I'll add, when you all take a look at the contract, because that's always a big discussion, you'll see that Mr. Boils didn't ask for, he's leaving a very secure position, and he didn't ask us for anything out of the ordinary. He was extremely generous and through the negotiation process. And I hope that you are able to see that when you view the contract. And he did all of this with note that a job that he is securing at this moment will not be there in a two year timeframe and that he'll have to enter a search process with other candidates in in the future. And we all fully understand that if someone is brought in and are able to show their work and and put that on full display, that they will may have an upper hand for candidates that are applying. So we're not going to sit here and pretend that we all don't understand that. But you all will get to see him in action for two years and then weigh that against other candidates who are coming in. And I'm sure that that was part of his contemplation that was unsettling. And you all can imagine why. And so I hope that when you all, when the public, they are thinking about this process, how council made the decision, the communication that you all are telling us that is lacking from us, have been lacking internally, staff and their willingness to be open through this process so that we can get turnover, this new leaf and have not, you know, major worries coming up day to day when we're already dealing with, you know, a pandemic and the stress and toll that that takes on people, that we're able to actually move forward in the comfort of knowing that someone who fully understood that our backs were up against the wall did not attempt to take advantage of that situation at all.
Okay, that concludes our first round of questions. There is one more opportunity to ask a question and a follow up. That starts now. Please raise your hand if you'd like to participate. And we have Nolan Stout with Daily Progress. Nolan, you're on with council, one question and a follow up.
Yeah, I'm kind of touching on that point. How does, you know, having Chip selected and knowing that there's going to be possibly a vacancy in 2022? How does that help recruitment when there's a real possibility that leadership might be completely different in two years?
I don't think that anyone looking at this and understanding that is, if this is not the traditional process and we don't want to set a precedent in Charlottesville that anyone that Mr. Boils will be attempting to recruit, who will take a look and research thoroughly our community, will have a problem with us acknowledging to our citizens who elected us that we will go through this process. So hopefully, by watching this press conference, doing their research that they are the type of individual who will respect the willingness of all, for all of us to go through this and won't look at this as, you know, another potential crisis.
Nolan, did you have a follow up?
Yeah, I also was going to ask, you mentioned, the council statement mentioned a lot about its role in leading to where the city is now. I wanted to know what specifically you guys are planning to do to address your role and to change things moving forward.
I can start here. I, we've spent all of our time here. There are definitely some conversations that we need to have about what the next 11 months and 15, 16 days look like. And so we just need, you know, time to do that. It is clear from your reporting during your tenure here and others that we've been in a constant state of crisis, that relationships are not healthy and that they are not conducive to a very successful environment. And I would hope that as we look and go through that process of introspection that I was talking about earlier, that not only we need to do, but staff needs to do and the community, community members need to do, that we come up with those answers and our honest and our conversations about what needs to be done and that we have a willingness, you know, to participate in it. As we've seen over the past few years, if this kind of discord occurs, it doesn't go away. It's only, you know, it's just the fanning of the flames. And so we all have to figure out how to do this differently and be open to it.
And and I think, you know, it's definitely going to require council taking collective responsibility. Each of us individually and together as a team. It's not about, we can't put the blame on any one thing or individual. This is all of us. We're all together in this team, and we have to collectively take full ownership of it together. And I think, you know, it's going to be necessary for us to acknowledge that and have those honest conversations. And I think work directly with Mr. Boils to just lay out better communication, lay out clear expectations, you know, have, again, more honest and open communication, you know, set some expectations and procedures collectively about how we're going to operate and have that guide what we do to have some stronger, just sort of guardrails for how we do our business day to day and how we communicate with each other and how we communicate with the city manager's office and staff. Additionally, there's no plan specifically to do this at this time, but I know something that's come up that may be necessary is drawing on outside resources, potentially like National League of Cities or, you know, people who can come in from the outside and take a look at the dynamics within council and city hall and just provide that outside perspective and some provide recommendations about processes and norms that can change to get us to a better place. Because I think we all acknowledge that if things were going great, we wouldn't be here. So clearly, there are things that need to change. And it's going to require us collectively as a body taking on that responsibility. And and as Mayor Walker said as well, really engaging in conversations with both staff and the community and in thinking about, you know, the importance of, you know, changing, changing the narrative and building trust in the community as well. And that's, you know, that's a process that takes a lot of time and work. But I think it's, it's absolutely going to be necessary as well.
Okay, our next question comes from Joe Thomas. Joe, you're on with council.
There I go. Counsel, counselors this time, is there a framework, a series of approvables for city staff and the city manager that you expect to see before the search goes on? Or is it a static deadline of two years?
I would say, really neither of those things. We would be working with Mr. Boils to create something like that. After evaluating where the agency is at this time and using utilizing his experience. Again, coming from a number of different agencies himself to create unachievables. We are looking about one and a half to two years. We don't want the public to not be part of a permanent, a permanent, permanent city manager search. And so it's that balance of making sure he has enough time to get the stabilization in place as well as making sure we it doesn't go too long without public input.
And I would just add as well, I mean, there's no city manager anywhere in the country is permanent. Every city manager enters into an environment of some uncertainty and the uncertainties around, you know, building, you know, lifetime, you know, it'll be in a community that that's the situation with every city manager and every jurisdiction. It's obviously no different here. And I I don't know if this to get to your question, but I think one of the things that's going to be important for us is to work with the city manager's office and city staff to to put together a strategic plan and put together plans that are clearly communicating what our policy priorities are. And then from there, working with the city manager's office and city staff to figure out, okay, these are the priorities. What is necessary in terms of staffing, resources, support for city staff to execute those policy priorities? And then also figuring out what is needed from council in the city manager's office to put staff in a position where they have the resources, it's important, an environment to execute those policy priorities. So I definitely think, you know, that's that's one of the things that we're going to need to be working on is again, clearly communicating to council our priorities and then also working on what are the processes to execute them and support staff and give them the resources to accomplish it.
And I guess the follow up question is mainly for Mayor Walker. The discussion came up several years ago about an elected executive branch in Charlottesville and perhaps representative districts for the counselors. Does this reopen that? Or does this have to put that away under the tumult that's been in the city staff?
Well, I haven't been the one primarily leading that discussion. And I think Neil Williamson had sent out as, you know, thoughts for the community and what the next five years possibly would look like with that. So I think that no matter whether you have a elected mayor, which the city manager position is a very strong position when I have talked about that publicly, it's because I have felt some challenges with communication with the previous city manager. And that is when I expressed that if someone had that much power, that maybe everyone should be elected. But if you have an elected official on a council, if you just watch the Richmond Council meetings, some of the same challenges, if there's not mutual respect and understanding will occur no matter what the whether it's a council manager or a strong mayor, you know, form of government and the strong mayor will still have to hire an administrator and that's that's what you see. And so I think it's more important here to figure out how we can work together better. And I think if the city is functioning better, the conversations about what type of government and the role is probably less of a concern to most of us. I know it would be less of a concern to me. If we continued on the path that we have been down, I think that is very important for the public to be able to ask and get information and insight from the city manager the same way they demanded from the five of us. So that's been my position on that.
Okay, and Sean Tubbs, you're on with counsel.
Thank you so much. The release didn't exactly say when you would start, Mr. Boils. And I'm asking the question. We're at a point where the budget is the first thing that will be one of your duties. You know, that's, is this something that you've been paying attention to at this point? And are you already starting thinking about what this budget is going to look like? Because you have six weeks until you, you know, traditionally the city manager produces it around that time.
I've certainly been paying attention and and I'm starting to pay a lot more attention. I cannot say that that I have any particular direction at this time. This has been a very quick process. And my first day will be March, I keep saying March, I'm sorry, February 15. And so, you know, a great deal of the work will already be in place in discussions with my existing board and with the Marin City Council. Now, the transition period, unlike other places, I think will go very, very positive. And I will begin to work and be acclimated and begin to to get my feet wet in the city business immediately. And so, you know, hopefully that will help, but most of the budget preparation and delivery will be done.
Thanks.
And and I would add, I think, you know, that the situation with the budget is certainly something which you know, is part of the urgency of council honestly confronting the situation we're in is is that need, you know, the budget is the most important document we produce in that need to you know, ensure that we're able to put together a high quality budget that reflects our values. And I certainly think we'll be in a position to do that.
I just want to acknowledge just appreciation to both Mr. Boils and the TJ PDC for being so flexible and making him available. Obviously, you know, with, you know, someone departing this position, there is a lot of value in having there be some collaboration between the person departing that position and someone coming in. And I'm given just the schedule as has been laid out with our budget is just so critical that we do start to kind of hit the ground running. And I'm just really generous of both the organization and Mr. Boils to to make themselves, make him available to us, even if it's on a part time basis, as we go through this transition before he formally begins.
And I, if I still get a follow up there. I believe that you have an affinity for Clemson University. Is that going to hurt you in negotiations with the University of Virginia?
We'll see how their football team begins to prosper, but under the current conditions, I feel like I definitely have a stronghold there.
Thank you, Sean. And Brielle Entziger, you're on with counsel.
Hey, hi, everyone. Just one more question. So I was just a little curious about the timeline. Mr. Blair, you know, accepting the position in Stanton. I was wondering if like him announcing that he would be something new position expedited the process of having to find someone to replace him, which ended up being Mr. Chip.
I would say that it certainly absolutely impacted like our timeline for this decision. When council became aware of that, we did some reflection and then it just became clear that this was something in order to, once we understood the kind of timeline that Mr. Blair was under. Just testing, what can we do to kind of expedite a process so that there would be that overlap that I was just referring to? Because that transition is going to be so important, especially as we're in the midst of this budget cycle. And so that certainly was something that was weighing on council and is why we've prioritized so many meetings so close back to back. Recognizing Mr. Blair's timeline in which his his information, his news would would become public and more formalized.
Thank you.
Brielle, do you have a follow up?
No, that was just my one question.
Okay, thank you. And there are a couple video folks who have not engaged in their second line of questioning. If you would like to do so, I'll give you that opportunity. Just raise your hand. And that seems to do it, Mayor Walker.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rice. Thank you all for joining.
Do we want to, do we want to make a motion right now or no? I'm sorry. Is that?
The country, yes.
Sorry. Are we ready for that right now? I was just going to move that we adopt a resolution. I'll go ahead and read it because it has only been available to the public for a short time. Whereas the Charlottesville City Council desires to elect and appoint Charles P. Boils II as Charlottesville City Manager pursuant to Charlottesville City Charter 1946 and is amended. And whereas Mr. Boils has agreed to accept election and appointment as city manager upon certain terms and conditions set forth and reading and accepted by Mr. Boils on January 13, 2021. Now therefore be resolved by the city council, council of the city of Charlottesville, Virginia, that the offer of employment given by city council to Mr. Boils on January 12, 2021, which offer was accepted by Mr. Boils on January 13, 2021, is hereby ratified and approved and city council hereby appoints selects and employs Mr. Boils as city manager upon the terms and conditions set forth in the offer. Mr. Boils will make arrangements to qualify for office in accordance with the city charter.
Second.
Ms. Thomas.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGill?
Yes.
Counselor Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Payne?
Yes.
Counselor Smoak?
Yes.
All right. Well, that carries five zero. That's
Congratulations.
Welcome. And so thank you all for joining us today. And we know there will be more questions in the near future and we look forward to answering them. Have a good day.
This concludes today's press conference. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome, Chip.